To feel comfortable supporting them. But you didn't respond to my email, so...
What email was that?
Oh, it was my line.
No, no, what email was that?
Anyway.
There was no email.
Oh, so yeah, okay.
There was an email.
Okay.
Then what email was that?
Like I said, we're not even gonna play that game. So anyway, anyway, that's my proposal.
All right.
So should I present that as a motion? I don't know.
No, you can't. Uh, I choose to reject that. It can't be, it can't be a motion on that. I have chances to let. So, uh, you guys, once again, it fails, the motion fails, again, uh, to have this compromise, uh, done again, uh, and it falls back on the shoulders of, we're done. The vote is squashed. There's no further conversation concerning this motion. Uh, it fails, so.
So that vote set, you failed to compromise as well, right?
There was not, there was not except.
So you're not, so you're not compromising with one person being the chair.
No, there's no, there's no further discussion. There's no further discussion. It fails. I choose not to accept. That made a compromise. Uh, I just want the residents to see it and understand it. So the ball is closed.
Yeah, I hope they do understand because you're not compromising with.
Thank you so much. So let's move forward. The next item on the agenda. I know we all have pressing things going on, so we're gonna make sure that we continue to move on in the best interest of our city. And let's, uh, move on to the next agenda item. Uh, once again, if you are on here for the BOSE again, I apologize to the residents who are watching. Hopefully you stay tuned, and if we don't move forward, you know why. So next, we have the RFP PayScale Performance Review Plan Position Descriptions by Mr. Daniel Bate. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, in your packet, you have a copy of the request for proposal. At the last meeting, uh, we had discussed developing a request for proposal to, uh, send out to solicit services for a firm or company to develop a pay scale, uh, to formalize our position descriptions, and also to develop a performance review program. So I've put that together and have it in front of you. Uh, go through the RFP, uh, pretty quickly. Uh, the first page is the table sheet. And I think in your packet, you might actually have, yeah, that sheet first. That's really the last sheet, uh, I remember. So the first page will be basically a table page, request for proposals, comprehensive pay scale position descriptions, and performance review. Uh, the rest of the document outlines the RFP, so, uh, begins at the City of District Peta's seeking responses to this request for proposals from qualified consulting firms or individuals to enter a contract for the following services. One, development of a comprehensive pay scale for all job positions within the city government. Two, formalize the existing job descriptions for all employees and pre-develop performance review policies and procedures to evaluate city employees. Next section gives the, uh, interested parties a brief description of the, uh, city government and the different departments that we have. Section B is the deliverables, which is what we want them to do. Uh, item one, we want them to prepare a comprehensive pay plan. Uh, states have, you know, we don't currently have a pay plan in place or pay scale, and that we want them to develop one that'll be competitive with like-sized municipalities within the Washington DC metropolitan area. Uh, and then it goes into a little more detail of how we want them to go about obtaining the competitiveness, uh, who they should include, uh, how they should report it to us, what type of updates they should give us along the way, what type of meetings they should have with us. Um, and then, you know, uh, item F goes into, you know, a little more detail on the, uh, uh, more details of what we want them to do with the final product being given to us in a Microsoft Media software form. Uh, item two is the second part. We want them to formalize the existing job description for current employees and authorized positions. Uh, city currently has job descriptions for each employee and job position. The current descriptions and formatting and updating for consistency and current laws and regulations. Uh, the scope of this RFP will include the updating of the job descriptions. A copy of current job descriptions will be provided to those expressing an interest in the RFP so they could see what format would currently have them in so they can, that'll help them determine how much work they will need to put into developing the new job descriptions. Uh, item three is the development of performance review policies and procedures to evaluate city employees. Uh, response to this section will include the development of a performance review policy to determine how an employee will be evaluated and rewarded for their work. Uh, certainly, city currently has a basic one-page evaluation as prepared by their supervisor approved by the commission. Employees will provide automatic increase based on above-average evaluation. The city's looking for more detailed performance review policy based on best practices in the city. Um, proposal requirements of, they're gonna submit a proposal. They need to include these three items, which includes experience, expertise, and capabilities, uh, which includes information about the bidder and their significant, uh, or summary of their relevant experience. Uh, two, the fixed dollar cost proposal, which is that separate form, uh, needs to be filled out and submitted. And on that form, uh, we basically are asking them to give us a lump sum price for the comprehensive pay scale, the formalized existing job descriptions, and development of performance review policy. Um, that way we could, you know, if we decide not to do all three or we decide to do one earlier, you know, first or something, you know, we have a price for each one versus, uh, lump sum price for the entire, uh, proposal. Uh, and then the third item would be any additional data that, you know, they want us to know about, you know, maybe references or, uh, something like that. Uh, proposals should be submitted to, basically, City of District Peta's, RFP for pay scale, job description, performance review, uh, in the city office. Each proposal should include one clearly identified original and five copies of their proposal. Um, I put some estimated dates in here, and these would all be based upon, you know, when you approve the RFP going out. You know, the dates may be adjusted accordingly, but if it was approved tonight, I think this timeframe would work that we would advertise it, uh, by next Thursday. Uh, that would give, I think it's three or four weeks, March 18th, when, uh, the bids must be received by. A week prior to that, we would have a pre-bid meeting, which would be March 11th at 10:00 AM via Zoom. Uh, and an invite from that meeting will be provided to anyone who asked for a copy of the RFP. So after we receive the proposals, uh, the criteria for evaluation, the word of the contract is listed there. Um, so after we receive all proposals, each middle should be screened and determined. If any should be deemed non-responsive, unsigned proposals and complete proposals, non-conformance and mandatory requirements may result in termination, non-responsive, uh, proposal. Uh, after you determine which ones are responsive, the remaining proposals will be reviewed by a proposal evaluation committee. We'll need to determine who that is. Uh, and then they will be evaluated based upon four criteria. Uh, understanding of the project's scope and objectives, firm and staff qualification, management team, references and experience with similar projects, and pricing, each equally weighted at 25% each. Um, and then put in there that, uh, we may invite, uh, presenters to, uh, make a presentation to either the committee or the commission, uh, but, you know, don't rely on a possible presentation presenting qualifications because based on preliminary may, you know, it may be an overall one that we're totally satisfied with. Um, and then, you know, payment schedule, you know, how they be paid, how they negotiate, and their actual contract, whoever's provided it. So, you know, I think that is responsive to what the commission asked for that we talked about at the last meeting. Uh, once this, you know, you approve it or run any changes or anything, then we could go ahead and put it out, get the ball.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
Can I make a motion?
Yes. Can I get a motion?
Yeah, I, Commissioner Harcourt, move that we accept the, uh, comprehensive pay scale position descriptions and performance review request for proposals.
Can I get a second?
Vice Mayor, second.
Do you want to vote in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We'll go along with those beats that we have there.
What did you say, Dan?
I said I'll go ahead and advertise based on those beats.
Excellent. Next, job description outreach coordinated.
Um, I have not had time to do anything with that at this point, so that would just need to be.
Go table that. Um, next, we got the senior citizen director job description.
I believe that's Commissioner Irving and myself.
Uh, Commissioner Irving?
Yeah.
You wanna start on that one?
Yeah, that we are. Um, there are, I understand, approximately two centers in Prince George's County that actually have their own senior citizen center separate from, uh, Maryland National Cactopaxian Plan. So I visited one center, which I've taken part with at, uh, and that was Bowie. So I went over to Bowie and spent about two hours with the director there and their, uh, community outreach person and got a clear understanding as well as information that they gave me of how they run the facility and the requirements of people that work there and, uh, the volunteers, which is most senior citizens, and heavily on volunteers. So I brought back, uh, a copy of the job description for the senior center, uh, director at the, uh, center and senior center's center in Bowie. So, uh, we're still working on tweaking it so that it fits, fits our particular, uh, center. But it did give the requirements, the qualifications, the functions and duties of that person. So we do have time, and, um, Mr. Bate and I will get together and, um, Mr. Robbins, and come up with the finalized product and ready to implement and have it through. But this was basically an introduction.
Excellent. Thank you so much for that. Anything else for you, Ms. Bate?
Um, if any of the commissioners have had a chance to look at this, you know, it's a basic, uh, you know, description. If there's any specific things that, uh, you know, you would like to see in addition to these, you know, you'd either submit them now or, um, you know, provide them to us so that at the next meeting, you know, we can incorporate those into, uh, the next draft.
All right. Excellent. Commissioner Harcourt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I do have a question. I, I thought that we wanted, we talked about maybe having, uh, where I see preferred qualifications, even though it wouldn't be necessarily, uh, put at the forefront, but I thought that maybe a grant writing skill would be helpful, uh, that they could seek out grants for senior programs and stuff like that, if it would be for preferred qualifications.
Uh, it would be. I was thinking that we're gonna have a grant writer on staff to the whole city.
Right.
Who gives grants for all the ways.
Right, I, I understand that, but I, I still think it would be helpful.
Oh, I agree.
Yeah, in a specific field, it would be, it would not be specifically necessary, but I think it would be, it would probably set a candidate above someone else that didn't have that experience.
And I think it's helpful, you know, for someone in that position, like Beverly in the YSC did a lot of her own grant writing. You know, so the more people you have and, you know.
The better, right, what else?
They might have written, you know, if they're coming from somewhere else, they might have had experience there that they could bring to us from programs that we're not even aware of. So I think it's a good idea to, you know, to include that in the areas of preference.
That's why we still have it, you know, still working on it. So look at it. We have some other things that may be missing that we need to add. So that's great. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Uh, electors, um, if you have any other suggestions, just like the one Commissioner Harcourt had, which was a great suggestion, just feel free to email Dan or I, and I'll put it in the notes so that when the final, uh, description is written or brought back in the next meeting, um, Dan will have it, uh, right in front of him, and you all will have a copy to review before the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Similar to that? Next, we have the qualification of a charter and code of ordinance proposal. Ms. Bate?
Yep, so hopefully by now, everyone has three different proposals for the codification services. The third copy just went around since the meeting started, so... And one of them just came in late yesterday, so, you know, the proposals are each about, you know, twenty or so pages long, and there's a lot of information there, a lot of information on the individual companies, what they provide, um, you know, and the costs associated with that. So, um, you have, uh, proposals from General Code, uh, proposals from American Legal Publishing, and one from, um, Unit Code. And, you know, I'm familiar with all three of these companies because we've actually gone through this process of, you know, one of the towns that I'm working for, and, um, you know, when it comes down to it, all three of these could do the project that we want to do, which is basically take our existing code, uh, last, uh, formal code that we have, and take all any, um, changes to that code that has been adopted since then, and basically put it into, um, you know, a final document that will become our new code, and then we view it for, uh, legal requirements and those types of things. And they will also, you know, put it in electronic form so we could post it, uh, on the, on the, uh, website and could access it, research, move to new page of things. Um, so, you know, when it comes down to it, uh, you know, I think all of them are just as qualified. Some of them have been around a little longer, maybe have more, uh, clients in, you know, the Maryland area, just because that's who people are most familiar with. Um, when you come down to pricing, it's really based on the number of pages that you have and the annual cost going forward. And then if, you know, the annual cost, we had everyone quote based on a 300-page document. That was kind of where we thought that, uh, you know, the final document would end up being, uh, includes indexes and everything else. So all three of the proposals are based on 300-page documents. Uh, there is a, you know, if you go over that, there's a per-page, uh, fee that you pay. Uh, one of them's 18, one of them's 19, and one of them's, I think, $22. So, you know, not a huge amount, you know, you know, if you're trying to compare, you know, any differences, but, um, you know, if you look at Unit Code on page two, uh, that is their basically cost page, uh, American Legal, and they don't have their, uh, pages numbered, but it's near the back after, if you look at the, their page from there. Yeah. The third page from the, I didn't even see that one. I was actually going to summarize that again. Yeah, actually about five or six before that, they, item five is their pricing code. Um, and then under General Code, uh, page 10. So General Code, page 10, uh, Unit Code, page two, and American Legal Publishing, you know, somewhere in the middle of their packet under ad number five. Kind of summarizes, you know, their, their pricing and what they all include. So, um, you know, looking at it, uh, price-wise, American Publishing, uh, $6,445. I believe they were the one that was 22 cents, $21 a page for each addition. I'm sorry, the second page after that, $19 a page for each page after that. And their ongoing posting on the internet, uh, rate is $450 a year. Um, General Code is $7,750. Um, theirs was, I think theirs was $18 a page. Three additional pages. Yeah, and that's on page nine, and that's $18 a page. And their, uh, annual fee, they say they have the premium E-code at $1,0195. I'm pretty sure they have a basic one. I don't really think we need the premium E-code, but I believe they have a basic one that's $695 a month, which they don't show here. And then, uh, Unit Code is $8,950, $19 a page, and, uh, $450 for their standard, uh, annual service after that. Um, so, yeah, not a bad thing. Yeah, I mean, yeah, like I said, they're all good companies. Yeah, the upfront cost would be lower with, uh, American, American Legal, or Legal.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and then the middle one would be General Code, and then Unit Code. So, again, there's a whole lot of other information, but, you know, from what I can tell, when you really get down to it, they all offer the same thing. So, um, that's really up to you.
Yeah.
If you want more time to look at them, you know, prepare them yourself. We could, uh, you know, seeing we just got, you know, them yesterday and today, we got the ones, um, we can bring it back to the March 3rd city meeting or, you can go forward now if you want.
You guys, are you, are, is Commissioner ready to make the decision?
I'm ready to make the decision.
And collectively, are we ready? All right. I'm gonna, uh, their motion on the table to what? Except? What do you, can you discuss with quick?
Yeah, so my, I just wanna say, talk about the rationale of the decision that I think we should go, with why we should go with Unit Code. The prices are all, basically, when you look at it, it's apples to apples. Uh, but the benefit that I think that Unit Code has is they are also subsidiary of, uh, the website that will be hosting our new site. So Civic Plus. So I think it would probably be better for us to go with a company that would be able to integrate this process into our current system without having too much, you know, having to fit in pieces. You wouldn't have to do anything, um, custom, uh, since they're already ahead of that. So I would, I would suggest that we go with Unit Code.
Uh, then with the others, are they integratable as well to website design?
Yeah, they all will, yeah, they claim that they are, yes. I mean, they're not directly related, obviously, with Civic Plus. Like, uh, Commissioner Harcourt said, Unit Code is now a division of, uh, Civic Plus, I believe.
Yeah.
Uh, but we have with the others that were proposed, uh, that the prices are...
The prices are less for the other two, and, you know.
Offer the same thing.
They all, you know, the, they all will be able to host you, be able to pull about from their website, just like any other website that is hosted by.
Okay. Uh, lower price offers the same thing. Um, what is the rationale going with it? More expensive?
No, it's not just more expensive. No, when you look at the hosting costs, so initially, our upfront cost is cheaper than this.
Okay.
But then they charge us about $1,195 or so dollars a year, um, to host it. So, and then the cost per page, if we go over, is more. So those things, and then the unknown factor is, well, if, when they say it's integratable, and I've worked on enough contracts with contractors, and I'm sure you have too, who say they're able to integrate seamlessly into these existing functions, and then they don't. And so I think that we waited so long to get this website up. Uh, we're finally there, uh, that, and we need to do this. It should have been done a long time ago. I think that this additional cost upfront would be worth it to ensure that we have a stellar product all at once by a company who's already in business with us.
Uh, that is true. Uh, that is a commission decision, so, uh, can I give a motion?
I, Commissioner Harcourt, move that we, uh, contract Unit Code for our codification services.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Vice Mayor, I, I second.
Is there any discussion? Wanna vote? Uh, but this is the, this is the one that was being, uh, suggested a couple of weeks ago. Unit Code, correct?
There was, but we didn't have other proposals.
They're not in proposals.
Right.
Um, okay. Um, so there's no discussion. All in favor? So we move in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passed?
And then the motion to fund it as well.
All right.
Um, and I, I did notice on one of these, uh, proposals that says, you know, they, they grabbed like that General Code, then Unit Code. It says that ARPA funds can be used for it because codification is something that is required. So, um, and maybe at this point, you just make motion to use, uh, ARPA funds for it, and then when we develop our ARPA fund, uh, you know, we'll pay a manor there.
So would you like us to move the money from the ARPA funds to the general?
Um, I don't think we've actually allocated in the budget the, uh, ARPA funds yet for specific, well, we have for a few specific purposes, so I guess we'll be moving it from the ARPA reserve account and just make sure, um, when we leave them. Yeah, so we have designated reserves for ARPA, and then we've moved money into a general category called American Rescue Plan for the vaccination event gift card program. So this would be another motion to move, um, let's go back, $8,000. I would say, it's probably not gonna spend all this year, so it'll have to be appropriated, but, um, to, uh, move $9,000 rounded up from, uh, the designated ARPA fund account to, uh, ARPA codification account.
I'll take it.
Can I get a motion?
Yes, I, Commissioner Harcourt, move that we transfer $9,000 from ARPA dedicated funds
Mm-hmm.
to ARPA codification fund. Yep.
All right, can I get a second?
Commissioner Irving?
Commissioner Irving, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Passes. All right.
Did you bear on it, Mayor? Is that just 4L?
It was 4L. All right, uh, next, uh, I'm gonna do a little skipping around here.
Well, I could just go to this one because there's no really discussion.
Oh, there's no, there's no discussion?
No, no. So on the personnel management divisions, I would like to table it at this time because we just voted on the codification program, which we need in order to move the personnel management forward. So I would like to table that.
So is that gonna be tabled until the codification project is completed?
Okay.
It's a while down the road.
Well, hopefully not.
I think they list, uh, I mean, it's like, uh, multiple, or, project due.
Well, how, you know, we'll find out how soon we can go ahead.
It'll be tabled too, until we can get to it and push that forth properly. Um, all right. Uh, next, uh, we have, I'm gonna go to the, the advertiser of the chief of police position, Commissioner Harcourt.
Right, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I only had, uh, two additions, and I did send those to Mr. Robbins. Uh, one was to change it, I'm gonna put it up there.
Changes to this one?
Yes.
Is this the change, one, or is it changes to this one?
Is, is, is that the change?
You should have the, uh, description, and then you should have the email that Commissioner Harcourt sent me with his, uh,
Okay.
Suggestions.
Yeah, I didn't have that.
Oh, you, you didn't provide that one?
It's, it should be in the...
Yeah, it's, uh, supposed to be under...
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Is it in the...
It's in everybody's file.
Oh, it is? Oh, okay. Is it after...
It should've been right next to it. Attached to it.
Uh, next to it.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I, yeah, the only changes that I, I suggested were that we had moved from the Maryland, um, and this was in addition to understanding the Maryland, um, Police Bill of Rights to the new, um, legislation that will repeal that. Uh, and also to change the applications moving from the City Manager, uh, to go into, the applications going to the City Clerk. And I thought that'd be discussion for the Commission, who we want those applications to go to. Be they the City Clerk or go to, uh, Mr. Bailey.
I'm a City City Clerk, um, having that information be best, and if, if we're gonna go with this, uh, that'll be the best, uh, person that's with us.
I have one, uh, correction. Or suggestion. Um, I think that, um, when we talk about the candidate should have a minimum of fifteen years of policing experience, including five years. But I guess it still makes sense to say fifteen.
I thought so, yeah, I thought that was reasonable.
Well, yeah.
For a number of, for experience.
Why fifteen years?
Because that way, you know you're gonna get a good Chief of Police.
Yeah, we want a seasoned police.
We want a seasoned Chief of Police.
Yeah, I don't, I don't agree with fifteen, with any of it personally, but, uh, it is not my pleasure, it's the pleasure of the Commission.
We may not have noticed, 'cause this is always been pretty much the same.
Yeah.
I didn't change that.
Fifteen years?
I didn't change that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I agree with you. Yeah. I think we, we have a Chief of Police now that we could actually put in place, um, so having a job announcement for me, you know, it's, it's not something I agree with.
Yeah, but we had already voted on.
I agree, I agree.
So, we're just moving forward on what our vote is.
So, what was your suggestion, Vice Mayor?
Oh, it was fine.
It's already...
It's, it's already. What was it? Fifteen years. Fifty-five years.
Yeah. So, therefore, um... Yep, so there, what do we have? An introduction, just look at it, make some changes, or you wanna...
We're ready to post that.
We're ready to post.
Okay.
'Cause this, like I said, it's pretty much the same bend of...
Yeah, so the Commission will like to post the job, uh, description for a new Chief of Police. Uh, can I get a motion?
With the, any changes from the Commission?
With the amendments, that Commissioner Harcourt recommended. And, uh, for those who didn't know, what was those amendments again, really quick?
One of them was in addition to, uh, being familiar with the Maryland Police Bill of Rights, is to understand, and I don't see the legislation, uh, but the new legislation that will be replacing, uh, the Bill of Rights in October.
The House Bill's, uh, nine sixty-eight?
That's correct.
Um, and the, uh, LEBR before?
Yeah, both of those, yes.
All right.
So, I can take the motion. I, Commissioner Harcourt, move, I, Commissioner Harcourt, move that we, um, move, or with the posting for the Chief of Police, with the amendments included in the position description.
That's the move. Uh, can I get a second?
Vice Mayor Miller, second.
Let's move in a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You voted?
Yeah.
Motion carries? Uh, the proposed ordinance, Mr. Farrar, that we pay you, half your money, so I just wanna get you to have this, talk about this really quick. Mr. Bradley Farrar, you there?
Aye, I'm here.
All right.
He's still can't hear.
Yeah.
This, uh, could, Antonio, could you tell the whole...
Mr. Farrar, hold, hold up a quick second, we have some technical issues. Mr. Farrar? Mr. Farr...
Mr. Farrar, hundred and one second.
We're having a little technical issue, give us a quick second. Are you ready?
If you can hear it, I don't need to walk back in to get down.
Mr. Farrar, try it again.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So, this is enacting, uh, our, uh, society, uh, ordinances, or, um, is any of the statutes included in the official, since we see that it is, we see, it's in a red, red eye on that, so it means to, uh, to, uh, ordinance, um, and those that are to be ignoring, uh, broadly, this is, this is section three oh eight, those are, uh, changes that they, uh, that's actually, and, uh, there was a change, a change. So, I, uh, there was any other statement? Uh, section seventeen eleven eleven, um, there was a change to, um, where it would be not enacting prescriptions in the Charter specifically around meetings and after, or after violation. Um, that this, uh, this harmonizes the ordinance sort of Charter in section seventeen eleven. And, uh, section seventeen twelve, um, section three oh five of the Charter specifically states that all regular meetings of the, of the petition, that that residents have to provide a, uh, reasonable opportunity to enter priority matters of the session. And so, that section harmonizes in the Charter. Um, regards to section seventeen thirteen, um, I remember that's the language there, proposed language there. Uh, so that is clear and harmonizes the Charter that, uh, that the mayor of all sections of the commission, uh, the three, uh, commission members, the all sections. And then it gives a notice requirement, and that the City Clerk has to go see. Uh, there are no, no changes, uh, to, to session seven three, to clarify the language, um, in the, uh, in the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the mayor there. And then in section seventeen twenty-six, regarding the sense of protest, on the ordinance resolution running active petition, uh, changed the language from the requirement to the motion. And that the commission member may, um, may possibly protest in running, uh, the, uh, the, uh, um, and seventeen twenty-seven, clarified the language, um, in regards to, uh, the mayor of the side of office, and as a case meeting, if the city clerk, uh, uh, and here, so, uh, we, we verify that, and here, so, uh, all the sections there. Uh, um, and, uh, what do you, what do you go to page, subsection, I forgot the subsection, I forgot the subsection. He, as I know, this was a something, sir, regarding to, um, interpretation of my position. Um, if we, the language there, that's a page eight, uh, uh, the language there is that there's a condition shall not present with the city state positions, or even national for positions in the county, that the city. So, that, that's clarified, as it is today. Um, and then, um, this is section G, you know, page eight, um, he clarifies that our, uh, that the mayor of the side of officer has to recognize, uh, the city management or staff member property taking, and, um, and speaking. And that section, the subsection H, and, and, um, we're right there to clarify that. Um, regards to subsection, uh, an eye to that section, section seventeen seven, here. Uh, number nine, that language clarified, um, that it's just during a petition meeting, that protests, I might, I might refer to that, uh, and, 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 uh, during, uh, petition chambers, during the meeting. And again, this is to, um, make sure that the petition has, uh, the form and, uh, this is on petition. During that, um, um, again, section seventeen nine, clarified the language there, that a motion, a proposition, unless, it can be reduced by, uh, the, uh, the member. Section seventeen fifty-one, engage, I'm not in, uh, I'm, 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 uh, reference to the city clerk as a meeting, and, uh, just clarify that's just for the city clerk. In section seventeen fifty-three, um, regarding the, uh, procedures, um, and clarify, clarify the language. Uh, I see, uh, 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 that's a case meeting, and, um, again, when we get to seventeen sixty, okay, fourteen twenty, there was a rule of, uh, for the reverse sessions, and harmonizes the Charter, section three oh five, and that other matters have to be, uh, considered during reverse session. And then, uh, seventeen sixty-four, and that's eight seventeen forty-four. Um, or that section, I had said to the, I had to the mission earlier, with regards to, um, section three oh three of the Charter, talks about, um, compensation to the petition, uh, 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 and refers to the city treasurer, and, um, regarding to, I guess it's IRS qualification fifty-one seven three, and, um, and, 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 and relates to compensation for the petition, and how take home deals are, are toward, to IRS, so, and, uh, ask, I ask for ordinance, regards to that, and relates to compensation. If, if that is a hate, uh, like, uh, the, uh, the, uh, this, this particular session made is allowed in that compensation, if it's not, then, uh, this particular session, uh, 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 it does need to answer you.
The right question.
So, so that, those are all the changes.
Okay, say, say, what, what? Ha, hold, hold on, say it again. Yes, sir?
Yes, sir. Uh, I, I wanted to say thank you for your thoughtful attention around this, regards to this, uh, this.
Oh, well, thank you, thank you so much. I, I, I had to go through with the five two code. Uh, I still don't agree with the, the last section, and I want you to explain that some more. I guess you can't, uh, because you're waiting on Mr. Bailey or Antonio to get back with you with some additional information, uh, concerning that, is that correct?
Well, yeah, sure, I, 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 I can, I can talk about this, so, and then, the charters, the chart defines that the petition is in compensation or, you know, the petition, okay? And, and, and I understand that Mr. Bailey, certainly, speaks to a, a part of him. Now, I can assure, and as it relates to how vehicles, uh, are, are considered compensation, uh, for, for, in terms of, I understand, uh, for, for, uh, petition. And so, if, if, if in fact, a take home vehicle is included in a compensation, um, for petition, that has to, that's, um, we need to reflect that it is harmonized, it's set by importance. It's, it's, uh, it's set by, it's set by importance, um, but, but if it, if it isn't, that, what this section does is it harmonizes with the fact that this, it is not, uh, a take home vehicle with compensation, so it does harmonize.
Okay, so we'll, we'll continue looking at this information. Was this information, the revisions and redlining, uh, posted for the residents? I think that's, because there are changes made, the residents have to have a certain amount of time to view it, is that correct?
Well, yeah, so, that's, that's, these are just, these are amendments to, to the ordinance. The ordinance can be out and, and asked amended in the Charter.
Okay, so for no public, no public comment for, or, uh, being posted by the public? So, what they see now is what it is, and, and it can be voted on now?
It, it, it can be voted on, uh, 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 to, to, essentially, all the ordinance, um, for version four.
Okay. So, what I've done, you know, the same, I've done with speaking with you, I've definitely sent an opinion to the, uh, the AGs, just to look at it, because I, I want that to be things in here that I thought was in friends and politics course, as I mentioned before. You, you gave your opinion on, uh, what you believe is, where it's not, uh, first amendment rights, uh, rules of, uh, the Charter, uh, decorum, uh, I don't know where, you know, the take home vehicle comes with decorum, but I guess it's something that, uh, was asked to be in here. Uh, so, with that, yeah, contacting the AGs for a second, I can be, be, be in the municipal government for a while, and seeing some things that have a chilling effect on, uh, the, uh, the movements in the state mix from, and the building of the government problem from the municipal, uh, position. And I wanna make sure that I had everything right, right? So, if that comes back, and, and this is good, I, I'll caution the Commission to, to wait before we take a vote, but it is, uh, their choice, of course, to do what they choose. I just have to make that, uh, a bit of a, to, 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 conversation. So, with that said, with that said, is there any comments?
Oh, I think it's still...
No, it's good.
Okay. So, I have a question for, um, for Bailey, is there what we told... So I have a question for, um, for Dana, is there ordinance on that, on the take home car, which we've all observed in the past?
That gave the, uh, mayor full utilization for taking people? There is, I mean, there was approved at some time in the past, and this is taking that away, uh, but we, we have to go back and look at it, but it was, I think, Jack Simmons' first term was when that was, uh, allowed.
It was the mayor.
And I believe the vice mayor was also providing a vehicle at the South Point, so is there?
Mr. Farrar.
Right, so is, so is this imported, part of the compensation package for, I mean, because there are costs associated with the car, I know if we're in government, we have to claim this, uh, a car on gas and all of that stuff, because the city, the city is paying for this, uh, and that gas and all of that stuff, so if, if that is the case, would that be reported as income, uh, that he'd have to file on his, uh, earnings return?
If the vehicle is used solely for business purposes, which is the reason, you know, the mayor supposedly been given the vehicle, then it would not be included as additional compensation, so it's only additional compensation to the extent that it's used for personal purposes, so, I've always been told that the mayor uses it solely for, uh, business purposes, to conduct their duties, and, you know, attend conferences, uh, pen meetings, visit, you know, residents, so we've never, uh, reported it as additional compensation based on that, uh, similar police vehicles, and, and police officers are always on duty, so we don't, uh, charge them any things for personal use of the vehicles, and also the, uh, public works, because they're on call to come back to the office, uh, you know, in emergencies, so, so events and things like that, so we do not report any of our, uh, any employees or elected officials that have taken vehicles, we do not report it as, uh, additional compensation for reasons. Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Alright. So, with this being said, uh, is there a motion? I'm sorry? Okay, you want that motion?
Uh, Vice Mayor Miller, motion that we accept ordinance number D H dash two zero two two dash zero one, to go into effect, uh, as of today, to accept this, uh, ordinance. Second.
It's been moved and proper second, uh, part of discussion. Uh, once again, for me, the part of discussion is, I totally disagree with this particular ordinance, I believe, as I mentioned before, was a attempt to slow down the progress of the mayor, uh, to do, uh, silence the voice of the residents and the people, and allow this ordinance to pass, but the commission has chosen to do so, I believe that, hold on, uh, somebody said unmute the commission. Can everybody hear me? Give us a second. Hello, can every, can anybody hear my voice, did he say yes? Okay, wait a second, hear you well, Bailey wasn't able to hear the commission, okay, so you can hear me, thank you so much.
Do I need to do the motion again, is that what I need to do?
I don't know if they didn't hear you clear the motion, but they didn't hear you clearly.
You could restate it, I mean, in case they didn't.
So, and for those who didn't hear, the, the motion passed, uh, by?
There's a motion by Vice Mayor Miller, seconded by Harcourt, to adopt the resolution that's not been in motion or vote taken.
Okay, it's, it has a problem, can, can you hear me now? Everyone is not muted.
Antonio, I think there's like a.
Maybe, 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 maybe.
A line to the speaker on that screen, it looks like.
It says, says we're all muted, in the, the, at the top, Antonio. Here we go. Unmute this, now can everybody hear you? Okay, thanks. And perfection, thank you. So, once again, I would say with this motion that has been passed, uh, motion, uh, was presented, uh, D H two zero two two dash zero one, uh, was taken by Vice Mayor Miller, it was seconded by Commissioner Harcourt, uh, in this part of discussion, my discussion to this particular motion is that it restricts the ability for the mayor or tribes, to restrict the ability of the mayor to move, uh, restricts the voice of the people here in the city to be able to speak freely, as the elected official, um, is going to, and be very clear when you, when I say this, uh, cause a chilling effect on how we govern and how we move forward, especially, uh, in a leadership role throughout the city, and to, uh, other elected officials in other jurisdictions, uh, once again, I reached out to Attorney General to get opinions, uh, on what they believe this, uh, uh, does, I believe it violates, uh, to some degree, uh, in the First Amendment and Fourteenth Amendment rights, if I am, uh, you know, not correct in my assumption, in reading this information, then oh well, uh, but somehow if it's overturned, you knew I was the first one to read, speak up, and, uh, harp on the rights of not only the elected body that put, you put into office, but for your voice as well, because, uh, free speech is not just a right, it is the right, um, to be had by the citizen of the city and district heights, so, uh, it's been moved and properly seconded, conversation. Can you, can you, like, with, uh?
No, no.
No, 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 no.
No, you took a privilege, you had a discussion on the motion.
I was asking everybody.
Can we now have the same opportunity that you had? I think that's only fair, that we have the same opportunities that you had to discuss the motion, just like you just did. If you want to be fair, that's what we do, not the partnership. So, I would like to also express, uh, my opinion on the motion, my feelings on them, because you said some things like, we're against the public and all that, that is so natural, we are all elected officials, and we were all elected to serve this community, and we all do our best at that, please don't use me, you've done that before, so, what I'm saying, what I'm saying.
Commissioner Urban, you're irrational, I know, but let me call, call you first. Yeah, thank you, this ordinance even calls for the same, thank you for being patient, Commissioner, uh, Harcourt, this, this, this ordinance that you, that has passed, and will pass when I call for the vote, I asked for discussion, I made a comment, I was given an opportunity for everybody else to comment as well, you didn't give me that chance, so, yes, you didn't give me that chance, so, once again, Commissioner Harcourt, do you have a question?
Did you have something?
Whoever.
So, so I do, um, first of all, you sta, you stated in your dissent against this ordinance that it, you think it violates your First Amendment rights, or your Fourteenth Amendment right, we are representatives of the city, we don't speak as individuals when we speak, uh, and act in our roles, we, we've taken an oath, we've taken an oath, and that oath is that we safeguard the, the city, this city will be here long after we're gone, it's been here since nineteen thirty six, also, you said language that you basically chastised me on when I made a, a comment about my understanding or interpretation of the charter, and you said, well, if you're misinterpreted, whatever, willy nilly, you know, and so, we, if, if words really matter, then they should matter to you as well, if you'll chastise us on the commission for our use of language, more than that, this chart, this ordinance actually gives the community more opportunity of a voice, they will, in the past, we have not allowed them to speak at work sessions, now they can, so we are actually giving the community more power, which we should be working towards empowering the community and not taking it away, this will not usurp the community's power whatsoever.
Okay.
And that's my opinion.
Thank you so much.
So, my, my comment is that, uh, being the past president of Prince George's Municipal Association, this is not the first time that this was done in a municipality, this language is the same, it's just according to each one's charter that we mirror up what we're saying, but this is not new, other municipalities have the same ordinances, so, what you're saying that is, it infringes on your, your freedom of speech, and, it, it's not doing that, it's not doing that, and, like Commissioner Harcourt said, is giving the residents more opportunity to be able to speak, because for two years, we did not have work sessions where we had public participation, so now it's in the ordinance that we have to have these work sessions with public participation, and the fact that we all should be working together, this is why this is here, so we can all work together to do the business of the city of District Heights for our residents.
Alright, thank you for your comment, Mr. Urban? No comment?
Mr. Urban.
Do you have a comment?
Well, I've talked before, but that's alright.
Okay, Commissioner Blazer? Alright, so, let me finish with what I'm saying, so everyone had a chance to speak, um, so, I think last meeting, there was an opportunity given to the residents to speak, and the commission, and, or jurors.
That was the city, work session.
A meeting, so, to hear the, to hear the voices that happened.
In here, it says work session.
And the voices were stifled, let me, let me speak one at a time, I'll listen to you, uh, once again, for this, uh, I, once again, I got the opinion from the AGs, this is not my opinion, Commissioner Harcourt.
We, we have a city attorney.
Yeah, I understand, this is what I showed you.
Their opinion does not apply to their bodies.
We'll see, we'll see, so I got the opinions, it's not, it's not just met.
And it's, they are opinions.
Let him figure it out.
That's all.
Yeah, let me speak, alright, um, so, we tried to, like I said, have the same decorum, but someone has to legislate, uh, the commission to do that through ordinance, because we can't do it for ourselves, uh, that by itself is sad, so, the comments are over, there's no further, and it's been first, second by Commissioner Harcourt, all in favor.
Aye.
And three, um, any abstentions?
Any names?
Any notes? No here? So the motion passed, Commissioner Blazer, did you make a vote?
Yeah.
So yes?
Yes.
Four oh one.
Alright.
Just to clarify, I think the motion said it would be effective immediately, it takes twenty days for it to go.
Yeah, I saw.
Oh, so twenty days?
Yeah, I saw, I saw that.
Twenty days.
That, that's it, that's all, thank you.
Alright, thank you, twenty days until the time of being in action, thank you so much, next, that's over, we're gonna go, I want us to shuffle around and get that, get that passed, uh, city manager job description, Vice Mayor, and the commission. We're gonna do the next.